I'd like to call this meeting of the Monroe County Council to order for Tuesday, December 12th, and I'd like to note for the record that all of the council members are here in the Nat U Hill Room. So, now that we know who's here, let's have the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the next item is the adoption of the agenda. Does anyone have anything they'd like to add or remove from the agenda this evening?
Yes, Madam President, I was thinking earlier about the JFAC recommendations that we never really came back to, and I wanted to see if we would be able to have a brief discussion of figuring out since that is supposed to be sunset at the end of this year, and this is our last meeting of the year.
Sure.
So if we can add that to the end of the agenda.
Absolutely. In fact, let's put it under Council Comments. I'm just going to make a note that we will remember to discuss it, but that'll be, it'll be subsumed under that as part of the current agenda. Any other items? I have a couple of items for housekeeping purposes. Item eight, which is the Convention and Visitor Commission Additional Appropriation, I'd like to table that to our January 23 meeting. Because of it being an ARPA project that needs a contract, we would have to do it over again anyway because it wouldn't be encumbered. So we'll just wait to do that. Also, I'd like to table the Prosecutor's Stop Grant Additional Appropriation. I'd like to table that one indefinitely, and they can come back when they have the paperwork for that one. Just kind of start the year afresh. Those are my motions.
Second.
So, a second.
Okay. All in favor of tabling items eight and 10 as described, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Oh, just to be clear, it's 10A, not 10B?
Thank you. Yes, yes. And then we have public comment for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone who'd like to make comment? If you're online, please raise your hand, and in person, please make your way to the podium. It looks like we have one person online, Mr. Shelton.
Good evening, Counsel, Jim Shelton. Just want to update you and the community for a few brief moments on CASA program. We have a training coming up in this winter, in February. It'll run February 6th through March 7th. It will be in the afternoon. As far as I know, this is the first time we've done this. It'll be Tuesdays and Thursdays from 1:00 to 4:00. And applications will be done, will be due January 24th. So with the holidays between now and then, people don't really have that much time to think about it. For those who don't know, CASA is a court-appointed special advocate. They are an officer of the court. They're trained by the CASA professionals in the CASA program. And then they serve as a volunteer to advocate for child or children who are in the juvenile court system because their parents have abused or neglected them. So, the way things work, the child will, or children will then be removed from the parents and placed with relatives, or with foster care, or some other less likely situations. And then the parents will be told what they need to do in order to be reunited with the children, excuse me, I have coughed. So the job of the CASA is to be another set of eyes and ears for the court to see how the parents are doing, keep with, with how the children are doing, and make sure the court knows. And so, usually Judge Harvey can be well informed when she decides what needs to be done for the children in terms of services or changing the situation. So the training will cover things like, what are the roles and responsibilities of CASA? What are the child protection law provisions in the state of Indiana? Discussions on interacting with children and families with DCS case managers and other professionals that the volunteer will end up acting with. And then writing reports in the way the court is used to seeing them. So I encourage people to think about this. Again, you can go to monroecountycasa.org, click on the volunteer link, and find the Frequently Asked Question page, that'll get you more details. It's a very fulfilling volunteer opportunity. I've been doing it for 11 years now, and it really does, it can be hard at times. As Judge Galvin used to say, "It's the hardest thing you'll do, but it'll be the most satisfying thing you do." And it's wonderful when the children have either been reunited with their parents or have been put in some other permanent situation where they can thrive. So please think about it. You can also call 333-2272 and talk to a staff member and get any questions you may have answered. So again, the applications, which can be filled out online at that website, will be due January 24th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton. And for those who are reading the captioning on Zoom, it's C-A-S-A, not K-A-S-A. But thank you. Are there any other members of the public wanting to make comment this evening? Okay, seeing none, let's go ahead and move to department updates. And we're, we've kind of, I guess this is a newish policy, but we've discussed that department updates are going to be limited to 10 minutes. And if departments have discussion items that take longer than 10 minutes, or they anticipate will need a little bit more time, to go ahead and make an agenda request. That way it helps us budget our time a little bit better. That said, would anyone like to speak? I'm looking at the online. Don't need that, that chat's not for me. Okay, I am, oh, hello? Welcome. Would you like to do a department? Please come on up. Green is on.
How's that?
Yes.
Okay.
It's good.
All right, that took 30 seconds.
You can have that back.
Before I start here, I want to, this is, to announce some movement on the agency, but before I even get into that, we had a lot of discussion about the transition team, the transition directors team, and all that stuff today. So, before, you know, I want to thank the council for all of their hard work in helping us maneuver through this process. I want to thank the commissioners for their actions on this a couple of weeks ago. And I want to thank Molly and Jeff for helping us tremendously with the contract. And then, I want to thank Angie Purdy, too. She, she met with us today and helped us with office space and all kinds of things. So what I'm, guess I'm trying to get here, this has been a multifaceted effort from a lot of people that have put a lot of effort into it. And I'm pleased to come to you today, say that we've accomplished that mission today because I'm coming here, and I'm going to do this tomorrow with the commissioners' meeting, and I just wanted, the council meeting was tonight, commissioners' meeting tomorrow, so no particular order here. But I want to announce our transition team director to you all tonight. So if, I want to give you a little background. Corey, if you'll come forward, I want to introduce Mr. Corey Grass to you. We promised you that if you moved fast, so would we, and we did. So we've, I've told you we had two or three, this was always our top guy here. But let me give you a little background, then I'm going to turn it over and see if you have any questions, him mindful of your 10 minutes here. But I want to start out by saying that Corey started his law enforcement career as an intern at the Monroe County Jail. So this is back in, what, 1991? 1993? So 1993. So, we had a lot of discussion, we want this person to be connected to the community, want this person to be aware of Monroe County, and what Monroe County's all about. So let me give you this resume here, and I think you're going to be well pleased when we get through this resume. So he started out there, that was that intern, at our, at our own facility. I saw his picture and his ID card, he looked like he was 12 years old, but Corey then went to the Bloomington Police Department, where he was a Bloomington police officer from 1993 to 2002. So he spent quite a bit of time in this community as a police officer, and he also worked at our own facility. Then Corey was appointed as an FBI agent, and he worked for the FBI, the Federal Bureau of Investigation, as an FBI agent from 2002 to 2014, is that correct? I'm sorry, '22, that's your, yeah, total, to '22. So he spent quite a bit of time there, but I want to go through some of his assignments at the FBI. So he was first assigned in Miami, Florida. So, and that's pretty common, they move the FBI agents around. But then, for seven years, he was detailed to the Federal Bureau of Prisons, and he was, he was actually detailed at the Terre Haute Facility there. So he spent seven years working at that facility, so he has a wealth of knowledge of how that prison environment works. Now, again, it's a prison, we're talking about a jail, but a lot of that stuff is transferable. So we've got the local ties here, we've got the law enforcement experience, we've got the corrections or prison experience in that environment. But then Corey finished his career with the FBI right here in Bloomington, and he was here in Bloomington from 2014 to 2022. So what I'm, what he did there in that time, right here in this local community, is he assisted, you know, the local agencies with any time they needed access and help from the FBI in a myriad of different efforts, of law enforcement efforts, investigations, or resources, or anything like that. So he has, if you talk to the law enforcement officers here, for example, our reserve officer back here, he walked in, he goes, "You're not too particular about the company you keep, are you?" So, I mean, he knows, he's been around Corey. So Corey has a real grounded relationship with a lot of the local officers here because of where he started here and he finished here. So we're very, very, very excited that we reached out to Corey, he rose right to the top of that, and we inked that contract with Corey today as a result of the efforts of everybody we've talked about. So, that's it in a nutshell. Now, there was, there was some conversation about education. I went over experience, now education here. Corey's degrees are from IU, Indiana University, and he has a bachelor's of general studies from IU, and he has a master's in secondary education from IU. So I, I don't know how we can really do better than those qualifications when we're looking at the total package of what we're looking for. Local ties, very educated person, lots of experience, a great reputation within the law enforcement community, and as you'll see, Corey can interact with anybody. He really can. He's, he's one of those guys that when you start talking, he can, he can, he can interact with just about anybody. So he's, I'm very, very excited that we've got someone with those qualifications, with that education, with the help of everybody that put into this, and we wind up with Corey Grass as our transition team director. So I'm going to turn it over to him for just a few minutes.
I don't have anything prepared to say, but I'd be glad to answer any questions. I do, I tend to talk really fast, and I tend to talk a lot, so I could squeeze a lot in in the last part of the 10 minutes, but just thrilled to be here. I appreciate the opportunity, it's fantastic. It's exactly what I've done most of my career, is networking with people, program management, getting things done, just trying to be a team player and solve problems, and including Randy back here. Randy went to National Academy one time when I was doing the recruiting for the FBI and that kind of stuff, so again, born and reared here. The only time I've spent outside of Bloomington has been the five years I was required to live in Miami, Florida. I transferred back up here at some point to Terre Haute, Indiana, I commuted every day to stay over this way, so.
Oh, wow.
My family's all here, I have a son at IU. I was, I grew up with Mr. Deckard's brother, went to school at Grandview together many, many years ago. That's the old Grandview School, by the way, not the new one.
That's right.
So, yeah, I've been around for a long time, and again, I can talk for hours to anyone. Actually, my last job in the FBI was recruiting human sources to give us information about everything from motorcycle gangs up to cyber issues around the world, so I can try to talk to anybody in a decent way, so I can be glad to answer any questions you have, and I'm sure I'll see more in the future and can talk more then, but let me know if there's anything I can answer for you.
Well, thank you, and congratulations and welcome.
Thank you, glad to be here, I appreciate it.
Appreciate all the, all the experience you're bringing to this important position. I will turn it to my colleagues to see if they have any questions for you. Anyone to my right, Counselor Hawk?
I'm excited.
Thank you.
It seems to me that you were started here in Monroe County Government at the jail, and I was on the council back then. That was like 1990, did you say?
'93 was my internship, yeah. But I started, actually it was IUPD before that, too, a little earlier. So I did IU Police Department from '93 to '96, I interned at the jail just before that, and then the city from '96 to '02.
Well, we're just, we, all of us worked so hard to get this to work out with the sheriff and, and his staff. And to add somebody as special as you to his special staff, because he has just hit the ground running with everybody, the ads, and you are the special person that we've been looking for, that he's been looking for, to complement the rest of the staff. I'm really looking forward to working with you.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that, and I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the sheriff. I've known Sheriff Marte since my days back at Bloomington PD, since the late, mid to late 90s probably, and Chief Parker's been a friend of my family's for a long, long time, so that reputation goes a long way with, it'll be a challenging position, I understand that very well, but if, with their help and their guidance and being on their team, I'm thrilled about it also. So thank you, I appreciate the kind words.
Counselor Deckard?
I'm so excited for your appointment, and the more and more I look back there, I thought, now, is that what's happening today? That is awesome. I was going to mention Grandview if you didn't, of course, all those old Grandview kids turned out really well, as we know firsthand. I think this is awesome. I have followed your career since we were kids, and you went off and have done remarkable things, and you're a true example
Thank you.
of a local kid that made good, and that professionalism that had you on that commute. And I remember when you were doing that, and I was a little congressional aide, kind of following all of our guys out there. I, I think this is remarkable, and I'm excited for the work you'll do, and again, the continued professionalism that we've got in the sheriff's office, and you as an extension of that. This is a tremendous night.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to say welcome, and I look forward to working with you. I don't want to belabor the opportunity for my other colleagues, but it's really a pleasure to see someone in this role. We've worked really hard to get you here, and we're glad you're finally here.
I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Counselor Munson?
I think it's wonderful that we have a homegrown man leaving this critical project for us. And if you get nostalgic for the playground equipment at Grandview, I can tell you, it has been recycled and repurposed out in the Indian Creek Township Park. You can come out and see it again.
Sounds good, I appreciate it, thank you.
Anything else? Again, welcome, and I look forward to working with you and the rest of the sheriff's office as we move forward.
Likewise, thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
That's all we have, unless you have something else for us?
No, this is great, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tapping his watch, I'm out of here.
Any other, yeah, any other departments that would like to make an update? I am seeing none online or in the room, so we can move to council liaison updates. Counselor Deckard?
Thank you very much, Madam President. I wanted to update this council regarding something I've talked about the last couple of meetings, and more than a few of us have talked about all summer, and that is the activities related to rural transit in the urbanized areas of Monroe County. And as you all will recall, we, in collaboration with the commissioners, passed some funding, some ARPA funding specifically to supplement some of the buses that we'd already got for Area 10 to continue on service in the urbanized areas. For the public watching at home, we had a, not we, but the county experienced a change in interpretation on what dollars could be used for rural transit, or specifically mobility in urbanized areas of the county, and that includes certain portions of the county that are outside the city of Bloomington, and certain portions of the county that are actually in the town of Ellisville. Last night, the town of Ellisville responded to Commissioner Thomas and I visiting a couple of weeks back, and they did authorize money for continued service in Ellisville's proper for three months. And so that funding will go for three months in Ellisville, and then we will be at a potential for lapse in service if they do nothing beyond that, or something else materializes, and I'm not quite sure what something else would be. Now, I, I don't like people in government or politics that scare people. In fact, I abhor that. We have way too much of that, and I don't want anyone to be alarmed. But what I do want to say is this, the same cooperation and collaboration that we've had, and the diligence that we've had in the last year to get to the county, do funding its portion for the next year, and Ellisville funding for three months needs to continue on past January, February, March. It has to be done. There is not an option for the mobility that gets people to, let me be real clear on this, to work, to doctor's appointments, to vital shopping that they have, that cannot stop. Let me be clear on that, because I've heard some remarks like that is a option or a convenience, and nothing could be further from the truth. And so for a community that cares for mobility and access for all, from border to border, we must continue working on that. Now, I've heard some calls also, I've not had a chance to watch the full Ellisville Town Meeting, and I'm going to, probably not, probably not wise to comment on any of it, but I heard some comments about the potential for a countywide tax to pay for additional services and revenue, and I think that would be, in my humble, one-seeded opinion, entirely irresponsible. I think that we can find funding between all the bodies, and we just need to do that to guarantee service and mobility for, again, folks that need access to doctor's visits, access to shopping, and they need it on all portions of the year which they would normally do that. And so I just throw that out there, I'm not going to belabor those comments, but that work continues. I'm encouraged that we've got this far, we've got more to do, and we must do it. There's not a choice on this. Ordering a pizza tonight, for some people in this community, that'd be a choice. This is a thing we have to do. So I encourage all council members, I encourage all officials, border to border in this county, to make this your priority number one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Deckard, and thank you for stewarding this cause over the past several months. It's been a very important and difficult issue to navigate, and it was in your hands, and I appreciate the way you've handled it. Counselor Iverson?
Thank you, Madam President. I have two updates for you this evening. First of all is that the Climate Strategies Workshop for Monroe County met Friday. There were 25 experts that were devising climate strategies to enhance climate resilience here in Monroe County. We're very thankful for all the work that they did. Right now, our McKinney Climate Fellow is working on putting those into a climate strategies report, and that will work its way into, with our vulnerabilities that the groups enumerated, that will work its way into the first ever Monroe County Resilience Strategies Report. That'll be the first time that a Monroe County has worked on climate resilience, and we're happy to be that inaugural body. The second update that I bring to you is from the Opioid Settlement Working Group. We met today. I have created a folder that is to be shared with you all, that includes ledgers from the auditor's office, agendas, as well as other materials that adhere to that. Today, we discussed Indiana Recovery Alliance Headquarters, Indiana Recovery Alliance Van. We talked about drug takeback programs, we talked about funding for certified peer recovery coaches, as well as two separate recovery, or certified recovery organizations, or RCOs, and so two of those will be coming to Monroe County. We're very excited about the work that we're doing in terms of using the opioid settlement funds to address some of our recovery issues here in town. Those are my two updates, and thank you.
Thank you. I was able to attend the Climate Strategies Workshop, and it was really amazing to watch folks work. There was a lot of synergy and a lot of really thoughtful work going on, so I appreciate all the work you've done on that as well.
A lot of bright people in Monroe County.
Other, other updates from your liaison work? All right, we're good? Okay. Appreciate you all. Number seven on our agenda is from the Legal Department.
Counsel, I move to approve Resolution 2023-36, Approval of a Tax Abatement for Enhanced Semiconductor Incorporated.
Second.
And we have Mr. Cockrell here, welcome.
Well, thank you. I am here for an item that has been through the Economic Development Commission and the county commissioners. It is a request for a tax abatement that's a little bit different than our typical tax abatement, in that they're requesting a 10-year, 100% abatement on personal property that they're intending to do. I guess I have three different topics that I would like to address, to, well, really four, because I'll talk a little procedure as well. But to kind of why we were excited and why those groups came to the conclusions that they did, all right? The process is a little bit different this time for one very important reason. One is, this is the former GE building that Cook Group had gotten a tax abatement, and had an economic revitalization area declared for it for 15 years. I think this is a reflection on the importance of this building in utilizing it for the, for the workforce and to grow the workforce in our community as well. And it's, one of the blessings of this project is that it is taking a former site that we had a plan to redevelop in 2018. COVID hit, and that led to a lot of wrenches in that plan. But that, but the Cook Group did enough on that building to make it so that it is now, that they're now marketing it to a different group, and they've had the ability to be flexible enough to be able to open up this opportunity for the community. Part of that package included a reimbursable bond through the Redevelopment Commission. Cook Group realized, once COVID hit, that they weren't going to necessarily grow as quickly as they did, and really, the only use of that bond was about $100,000 for the closing costs and maybe some other related expenses. So it went through the county commissioners because it was in a TIF district. I believe you all got a letter from, from the Cook Group indicating that they are supportive of this. Again, the reimbursable bond is 100,000. I'm kind of working with Cook and our bond council to kind of figure out, since they're not, they don't have plans to use any more of that, it was up to 6.1 million, how we're going to just roll that back and get that taken care of. That's a topic for a different day, but that's one of the big things with this, is the reutilization of that building, something that we knew we were going to struggle with, had our Cook Groups come and step in and help get this building to a place where it can be productive for our community again. So that was probably the number one reason why this tax abatement excited me personally. The other, the other two reasons are still pretty good. One is, is bringing something to our employment and our, and diversifying what we do here in Monroe County. They are a semiconductor manufacturer. There's a lot of federal and state push to get these types of businesses within, in the state and within the country, and this is a great place for it to land. The third is, if you look at the, if you look at the application, they're off, they're expecting to have 200 expecting to have 250 employees by the end of 2029 and the average wage of over $100,000, which, I mean, if those of you have tracked tax abatements before, those numbers are pretty staggering. I also believe they may be a little conservative, but I can be optimistic at times if I, if I need to be. So assuming that all, assuming that, that you guys are aware of that, it did go through the Economic Development Commission, and they unanimously recommended that this body approves it. It went through the, or the county commissioners because it is in a TIF district, and the state code requires the county commissioners to approve the statement of benefits for any tax abatement in a TIF district. Again, we don't have to go through the entire two-month re declaring an economic revitalization area because we did that in 2018 for 15 years, so this is still well within that. If you have any questions for me, I'm more than happy to answer them. If not, I know there are company representatives who would like to give you more information.
Are there any questions at this time? No, we'd love to hear more.
I will turn it.
It looks like, it looks like Mrs. Hawke has a question.
First of all, thank you for taking so much time to answer all my questions today, and I appreciate you bringing this information and for the public at home to maybe understand how all of this works a little better. When you told me it was a drawdown bond and they had not drawn down that much of it, right away, that was a big relief to me because we don't want the other taxpayers to have to pay for a large bond that maybe we didn't get the use of. So that was just real important for me to hear, and I hope the people that I help represent will understand that this bond is not, it's going to be, it's going to go away. It is not going, I mean, that's what you're working on, correct?
We're working on that. Again, we got to make sure we pay our debt, but I think we have ample funds to take care of that. We can't pay it off all right now, but I think just the natural collection of tax revenues will allow us to pay that off in a few years.
And perhaps some of the plans that were put in place when we made it a special TIF area just for that spot and put the bond in place for some of the things that we thought was going to happen, which, you know, just simply couldn't happen after COVID. So there's not really going to be the need for all that money, at least not at this time. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And I know that the question I'm going to be asked, I've already been asked this, what's going to happen with the building? Is it going to look different on the outside or whatever? And perhaps somebody here will let us know.
Well, I think the Cook Group's going to retain ownership, and so they are going to, they are going to be able to deal with the exterior of the building. The people who are coming to present to you tonight are not from Cook Group, they're from the Enhanced Semiconductors, Inc. So I'm not sure they'll be able to answer that question, but certainly, I think this provides, you know, the opportunity to do some other things.
Thank you.
And approximately what percentage of the building footage, square footage, or do they intend to occupy?
They're intending to occupy, I think, up to 150,000 square feet. And my memory walking through it is that they had over a million square feet on that campus. So I think you're looking at 15%, give or take.
So still lots of room for, for growth.
Yes, and I think one of the things that they'll say in their presentation, because I've heard their presentation before, is how they, how they have an expectation, not a promise, but an expectation that this may attract other similarly situated companies to the area. And that, and that building hopefully would be available for that kind of growth as well.
All right, thank you.
I guess it's my turn. So I'm Bob Paddy. I'm the president of Enhanced Semiconductors. And I wanted to come here tonight, tell you about what we do, what the facility will be. I think you guys have some slides that you're going to put up. And we're leasing 172,000 square feet, and I think the building is a little over 800,000. There are opportunities that we would double our footprint. It's, it's too early to go into that, but there is, we actually put in a large proposal yesterday that would result in doubling our footprint. So, so quick background, Enhanced Semiconductors was formed in 2016. Why don't you go to the next slide? I might be saying things that it already says. Okay. The, we're a relatively small semiconductor company. We currently have about 60 employees. We have a, we are a spinout of another company I founded. Our fab in North Carolina, which we are maxed out in the footprint that we have there. That's one of the reasons we're expanding out here. They, we have been at that site either as Enhanced or the predecessor company since 2013, and it's been an operating fab since 1999. And actually, many of those employees still work at the facility. So I'm chief cook and bottle washer, Buck Stopp's here. We have more than 20 years' experience in building these kinds of devices. This is notionally the next generation of semiconductors. It is a way of building the chips that we use in all of our wonderful electronics today, but it's much less expensive to build. I will also state that it's, it's more environmentally friendly in terms of what we do than the chip production itself. Why don't we go to the next slide? So as part of the push to onshore, I guess we were early in that. We onshored more than 10 years ago. The, this facility that we're building in Bloomington is meant to target our commercial market space. As a company, to give you a feel how rapidly the semiconductor industry is changing here, we will almost quadruple in size this year. So it's a very steep ramp. We were very fortunate to find this facility already built. The, we're still planning to build the fab down at Westgate. That's moving forward. Unfortunately, the timeframe is like 2026 for that to come online, and we are bursting at the seams. So we're anxious to get into this facility. And actually, in the last, less than, well, about six months now, we opened up a facility in Odin and Westgate where we do assembly, and we have a 30,000-square foot footprint there. We went from 12 to actually 32. We added 20,000 square feet about a month and a half ago. So the facility we're going into at Cook, we'll have to do some additional build-out. That's one of the reasons I'm down here. I'm heading down south to meet with folks tomorrow to see if, if they can sharpen their pencils. That's my job. Next slide. So here is the site here. The star is notionally, actually, that darker roof line is pretty much the section that we're leasing. That was an area that they renovated that Cook had intended to bring production into. That is the closest match for our needs. Next slide. So we do anticipate 250 jobs. I don't think that's an overestimation. If, there'll be people in the room who want to shoot me, but I do imagine it'll be closer to 400. And if some of the things that I've talked about where we would expand it, it's not inconceivable that the site would eventually host as many as 1,000 high-tech jobs. Not all ours, to be clear, but we are talking to many other folks that want to cohabitate in this kind of environment. These jobs pay well. The engineers, which we're hoping to get a lot of them, from Purdue and IU and Notre Dame and Rose Holman, where I went to school, those engineers typically make salaries between 150 and 200,000 dollars. And then we have highly skilled labor. The blue-collar labor that you have in a fab, they're the guys who run around in the bunny suits, we call them, in a clean room. We're going to train them. They'll come out of this community. We imagine they'll come out of Ivy Tech and Vincennes. Part of our facility down in Odin at Westgate today, we're erecting a new 3,000-square-foot clean room there, which is primarily going to be a training facility. So we're getting it ready. We were hoping to have first production out of our fab in Bloomington in the third quarter next year. It's a very aggressive schedule. I'm sure we will not make it, but you have to drive to our goal. So I know it was asked in another one of the meetings, how many people will be local and how many are we going to import? I would estimate that about 95% of the staff will be drawn from Indiana, and about 5% will be imported from other areas in the U.S. And that 5% is kind of the seed that we need to bring up processes and train people. Okay, the bulk of the investment, semiconductors are a very expensive business. We like to say the day you open up the fab, you've spent all the money. I mean, it's, it's very capital-intensive. That's normal. I'm pleased to say our kind of semiconductor is a lot less capital-intensive. Breaking it down, it's, these are typical semiconductor processes for the most part. We call it lithography. You don't need to know this, but I'll tell you anyways. When you build chips, it is mostly a photographic process. It looks at a massive scale, like what they used to do down at the photo mat when they printed pictures off of film. We essentially use film. We coat the wafers with a photo resist, and we develop it. That's how we can do this amazing stuff. You know, we don't have any little people in there etching things by hand. It's a photographic process. So that's kind of the key to making all semiconductors work, not only what we do. And then everything is done by adding material and removing material. It's step and etch. So unique to advanced packaging is the bonding and some of the other specialized equipment for putting chips together. So we get raw material from many of the existing fabs today. Matter of fact, we deal with almost all the existing fabs in the world today at one point or another. And most of a semiconductor chip is non-functional. If you, if you looked at a semiconductor wafer like you were building a house, the house being the very top where all the transistors and wiring, all the important stuff is, we have a foundation that's about 400 feet deep. Most of that material in a semiconductor is just there to hold it together. And what we specialize in is we take that important part of it, and we can stack multiple layers of it. And so we build chips like building multi-story buildings. We still have one with a 400-foot foundation. We can't get away from that. But instead of having 10 of them with 400-foot foundations, we only have one. Makes it smaller, makes it light, it makes it lighter. And the reason that everybody wants to do that is because it makes the wire distance shorter. And all the power and all the delay is because of wire. And why it's important beyond the fact that your cellphone will do more and your computer will run faster, it may be the answer to how we make the data centers not take 25% of the world's power consumption in 20 years. Enhanced is a member, founding member of the Department of Energy, has a group where we are working to reduce the amount of energy consumed by computers by three orders of magnitude in the next 30 years. So that is a reason for what we do and why it's important, not just that I'm going to bring jobs and that we're going to make money. It has global good that comes out of this. Okay, next slide. Project benefits, I think I've mentioned some. Obviously, it's a building that is not currently being used. We will be jobs and, you know, educational opportunities. We're very active in workforce development already. And I think we are going to attract a significant, a number of other people to this site. We have plans for similar things at Westgate, which have been publicly announced. That's it. I would be more than happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you for making the topic of semiconductors almost understandable by me. Appreciate that. I'll let Counselor McKim go over. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming to the county council and very much appreciate you coming to Bloomington to bring your company. I just wanted to ask you essentially the same question that I had asked you before at the, at the EDC meeting, is just to, just briefly kind of describe any particular, kind of the environmental impacts of the factory, any particular notable hazardous waste or...
Manufacturing of semiconductors does involve using chemicals and metals. We do not use any heavy metals in our processing. We typically use aluminum, copper, nickel. Occasionally, there's some other trace elements that we use, small amounts of titanium, for instance. The, in terms of discharge, we've been operating the fab in North Carolina for 20 years. We have a special permit to discharge copper and part of our effluent that is above normal levels. That's a concern because copper has an antimicrobial property that you have to be cognizant of. So that's something that we work with the sewage treatment district to make sure that they know it's coming and that we're within reasonable limits. That is the only material that we discharge into the waste stream. There is no significant discharge into the air of anything we do. Anything that we feel is of a hazardous nature, because we process many different materials, and some of those, we, not only do we deem them to be hazardous, we know they are. They're materialless. That is captured, and we store it on-site, and we have that quarterly or yearly picked up and appropriately treated and disposed of. We don't build, we don't create a lot of that, so it is not worth our, our while to do that treatment on-site. So we store it, we store it in the building. It's not like we have a dump in the backyard, and it's a small amount. So I think we're a pretty clean industry. And as I mentioned, semiconductors do have a bad history. I'm cognizant of it. There are superfund sites in California that were fabs. A lot of that has to do with the transistor-making process. We don't build transistors. We do the metals on the backend. So it, it is a cleaner, safer process than building the transistor portion of semiconductors.
Thank you very much.
I'm so glad you took time to describe those things to us that we would not have known if you hadn't shared it with us. And what you really were sharing with, what I saw, was your passion for what you're doing. You remind me so much of Bill Cook. He had so much passion for what he brought and what's, what he was providing to the world to make a change. And I could hear that in your, in your excitement for what you do. And what a wonderful way to bring that to Monroe County, and I appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Counsel Deckard.
I'm also grateful for your explanation tonight, and I'm really excited. Our friends from the BDC, the chamber, are here, as well as legal that have been a consistent advocate for this. And what I'm excited about you coming in is seeing a plant, a facility that used to have a lot of life. have a lot of life when I was a younger kid around here, have life again. And I think there's a story there and I think we need to tell more of that story. And I love the notion, I love the idea that we're diversifying this economy in a glorious way. And I, probably not qualified to try to spell semiconductor on some days, but I do know that having that here is just absolutely tremendous, because I sometimes look at this community and I get a little nervous that the jobs get bottled up into certain silos and if that silo ever changes or the bottom falls out, that is not a good thing. And we've had a history of that here. So I'm so excited that you're investing here, that you're here and that we are investing in you. As you get acclimated into the community and your folks find their stream and encouragement, I would have for you as an organization, and you may already be doing this and you may be able to teach us on it, is to find those areas of need in the community that you as an organization can engage in. I look at my own last 48 hours and this is just walking around, some meetings, some informal, four major areas. And you heard a little about passion earlier tonight. Mobility, obviously, getting folks around particularly that area where you're all going to be. Hunger issues. We seem to be growing hunger and housing issues here as if that was our number one export and that's not something to be proud of. And of course, healthcare. So as you all get acclimated and the United Way folks and all the smiling folks come by, I encourage you and your people to find what it is that you can plug in and join us in those efforts. And I know that the brilliance and good stewardship that got you to this point will help us even further. So thank you for coming here.
Thank you. And I'll point out just a couple of things. One is, I would like to note that we do provide full benefits for all of our employees. They get medical, dental. We have a 401K program with matching and I think we match up to 6% these days. So, we do offer a very good benefit package for our employees. And I can tell you that we do participate things, with things in the community. We encourage employees to. I can tell you, my wife, who also works for the company, she does most of our corporate communication. I like to say she gets out of prison tonight. She's a mentor at a youth prison, so she's very active in those type of causes and that is something that we have contributed to before. So, I think we try to be good members of the community and contribute where we can.
Counselor Iverson and then Counselor Crossley.
Mr. Patty, thank you for being here today and thank you for bringing your team here. We really are quite proud to host you and to hear your presentation yet again. I think one of the things that as the community hears your presentation over and over again is just how well it dovetails into some of our economic vitality that we're looking for in terms of collaboration and really garnering those, the workforce that's coming out of Indiana University and Ivy Tech. My question to you tonight, though, is can you tell us a little bit more about how your company is utilizing the resources coming out of the CHIPS Act?
We are intending to put an application in our pre-app for the site here and in Bloomington next Friday. We actually have most of it written. We're finishing the financials. That is what I'm, one of the things I'm doing tomorrow is going through with the team to put those in place. We are active on the R&amp;D side of it, the NAPNP, National Advanced Packaging, Advanced Manufacturing and Packaging, basically. And then there's the NSTC, which is the National Science and Technology Center. We are a member of one of the large teams that's doing that. There are other things, and I alluded to earlier, we put in a proposal for a large government program. I think we're one of four likely sites in the country. And that is significantly more dollars than what we've already talked about. So we're actively involved in those. We certainly hope to get funding from the CHIPS Act. There is a significant level of interest by NIST and the Department of Commerce to foster advanced packaging. We're a very small company. However, we're the 600-pound gorilla in the United States. When it comes to quantity of manufacture, we are dwarfed by production in the Far East already. However, their primary thing that they build, I didn't bring up my cellphone, the cellphone cameras, those are all advanced package circuits. And as a matter of fact, some of the first ones were prototyped in our fab more than a decade ago. So, we're hoping with this facility, we can capture some of that market that we've been basically incubating here and then handing off. So this is our first effort to go into a much higher volume capacity than we can do in North Carolina and hence why we are interested in the CHIPS Act. And we do have a pretty consistent set of conversations with the CHIPS folks. They've actually been out to our fab two or three times.
Great. And I think that's one of the most exciting things about this. The jobs are fantastic, the vendors that are going to come alongside you, that's fantastic, but the potential for growth is really exciting.
The numbers, there was a number that came out within the last week that projected chiplet growth, and that's part of this advanced packaging that we're doing, is expected to grow at greater than 70% per year compound annual growth rate for the next decade.
There you go.
The specific kind of 3D assembly that we're good at and that we do a lot of is also anticipated to grow at greater than 70% per year for at least the next five years. So, there's, we've been at this for 20 years and we're finally at the right place at the right time.
I would say so.
Thank you for your presentation. And what I would like to echo what Councilmember Deckard was saying too is, we look forward to, what actually got me excited about your presentation is to see that we have 250 new jobs, maybe close to 400, and the amount of wage, the average wage that would be coming in. And I would really hope, of course, what is also near and dear to me as well is affordable housing and being able to retain those jobs here in our county and, you know, working with you and some of our community partners as well. So I look forward to this coming online, but I also look forward to seeing how you all would be able to collaborate with us and the county and even, you know, our city colleagues as well, so that we can retain and continue to grow our local economy with this potential job growth that's coming. So again, thank you so much and look forward to what you will bring to us here soon. Thank you.
I look forward to working with all of you.
Counselor Iverson.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I just wanted to add to the discussion by noting that you are going to occupy an area that has been essentially unused and abandoned and you're going to put it to good use. This is very wise conservation of the resources here. And thank you for picking a place that doesn't require investment in additional energy put into building. And one other question for you, and that is, when do you plan to be open, so to speak, for business? When do, what is your more or less start work date?
We're looking to, I'll give you the best case. I always say there's two dates I can give you, the best case and the worst case, and the worst case is never.
Okay, no.
The best case is April 1st.
April 1st.
Yes. And a lot of things have to start coming into place. That's when we would start populating the building with our equipment. There's a stream of contractors standing by. We're still finishing up the lease terms and fine print with Cook. We're working with some investors and other things, because we're obviously looking to bring a lot of equipment and capital in. But assuming that we are able to execute all of that in a timely fashion, we're looking to start having real people on-site in the April timeframe and first production in the third quarter of next year. And then it will be a ramp.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Patty.
Anyone have any other questions?
I had a question about the effluent discharge that you mentioned and specifically you said that copper was of a concern. Is that something then, you mentioned that that was, you were describing North Carolina. Is that something then you anticipate needing to work with and figure out here?
Yes. Yeah, and typically the sewage treatment district, when we work with it, first of all, we monitor it in real time in North Carolina. We would be doing the same thing here. We do use acids and bases, by the way. We pH balance those and make sure that they're neutral and those kind of things, because we don't want to be corroding any of the sewer pipes either. So we will work with the district. They can usually tolerate a certain amount based on the amount of water that is used. And we monitor that. We actually, within the system, you gather a certain amount of it, you do assay on it, make sure that it meets the criteria and then you discharge it.
All right. And have you talked with any of the utility folks here?
I think there's been some early conversations, but I have not been directly involved in them. Generally, I can tell you, just because I have talked to the North Carolina folks at length over the years, as long as they are aware and they put it into basically a budget of the materials that go into their waste stream to make sure that they can maintain the healthy microbes in the sewer treatment.
Sure. All right. Now, if there was a way you could get that copper and recapture it...
Yeah, it would be great.
There's a technology to develop.
It, in North Carolina today, it, we are permitted, don't necessarily do this much, but we're permitted for five pounds per month. So that's how much it is. It's not that significant, but it's measurable.
I don't have any other questions and I do really appreciate all of the hard work that has gone into this and I'm very excited to welcome you to our community. I know the BDC, county government, Cook, of course, have all been working on this. So, I believe we need to ask, unless you have any other presentation or anyone else needs to talk in terms of presenting, are we... All right, I'm going to ask for a public comment on this item.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jen Pearl and I'm president of the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation, or BEDC. We've been working for much of this year with the company and other partners on this project, so we're really excited to be speaking to you today. First, we wanted to thank Enhanced for your interest in investing significantly in our community. It's been really a pleasure to work with you all this year. We see this as an incredible opportunity for Monroe County, which is really evolving as an epicenter for innovation in Indiana and this is a piece of that larger, of that larger whole. We're seeing billions of dollars in federal and state funding that is flowing toward our communities through Chips and Science, through infrastructure funds, through Indiana Ready and other initiatives. Entities like IU and Crane are investing very heavily in semiconductor and microelectronics industries. And communities like ours need to be ready to leverage these opportunities and capture them. We're really seeing the development of an ecosystem here that is growing out of that region. Enhanced, as you've seen, is a leading U.S.-based design and manufacturing innovator. This is part of a larger global milieu in which they're operating as well. And so to be able to do that from here in Monroe County is really exciting. The company's proposed investment of $150 million is actually one of the largest that our team has seen in our four years of working on projects with this team of people. Their plans to hire 250 new employees with an average annual wage of $100,000, not including benefits, is far higher than our median household income of around $54,000 per year, that is according to the U.S. Census Bureau. This is especially critical because our local private sector hourly wages lag the Indiana statewide average and it coincides with opportunities to upskill our local workforce. As was mentioned earlier, diversifying local jobs is really critical. We've seen the need to do this in the past and that's been a major focus of the BEDC's strategy in working with companies moving forward. The company's tax abatement request will help them to make a significant investment in equipment and speed their growth. Additionally, their work with Cook and the revitalization of a former brownfield is really a testament to the opportunity that they can provide to the community and the region. The BEDC supports this project and we really appreciate your consideration of the tax abatement request. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Good evening, counsel.
Hello.
Eric Spoonmore, president of the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber is an organization that's been in the community for 108 years. We represent over 850 local businesses and organizations, most of which are small businesses, but we have some bigger organizations and nonprofit organizations and Indiana University, Cook, large employers as well. So, you know, we are very excited about this project and about this tax abatement and what it's going to bring to the community. We urge your support of this. I want to echo and reiterate everything that my friend and colleague Jen Pearl has stated about this tax abatement. We're extraordinarily excited for Enhanced. We're excited for the community. And I want to congratulate everybody involved and thank the council for the consideration of this tonight. Thank the commissioners for their initial approval last week. You know, I can recall during my time on the county council, when I was one of your peers, when these tax abatements would come before us. And it was one of the best parts of that job, knowing that we're making these investments in the community, making a difference, growing jobs, helping families earn a living and, you know, again, just couldn't be any more excited for this particular abatement and project here. Everything that Enhanced has mentioned, I think, exudes exactly what the Chamber values. Its partnerships in the community, we hear about them wanting to work with our local schools, with Ivy Tech. This is just an incredible opportunity for us and we all know this, you guys know this. I want to ensure Enhanced that Bloomington is the best place in Indiana to do business and you will be welcomed here and we want you here. So, again, urge your support of this, abatement tonight, and thank you all for everything that you do in the community. Thanks.
Thank you. Other public comment?
Good evening. Dave Askins with the B-Square Bulletin. The question that I am hoping to get answered tonight, and my apologies if this answer is actually in the information packet and I've missed it, but I'm interested in finding out the estimated dollar amount, the value of the 10-year tax abatement. We know it's 100% of what the taxes would be, but there's no dollar amount that I can find for what that might actually look like in dollars that would otherwise be paid. And I understand that this investment would likely not be made but for the tax abatement. So in that sense, it might not... So in that sense, it might not be crucial. But I think it's important for us as a community to understand, for the jobs, for the economic impact, what is the value of the taxpayer investment to attract that, that investment by Enhanced? So, I mean, typically, there is a table for a 10-year tax abatement that walks you through, okay, it's an incremental abatement, starting with 100%, and then it goes to 90%, 80% on down the line, and there's a corresponding dollar value. And this looks like exactly the information I was asking for. And I hope this was not in the information packet. But in case it wasn't, I'll just hold it up for the camera to zoom in. Maybe Mr. Cockrell might afterwards, actually.
Yeah, we'll let, we'll let him talk a little bit to make sure it gets into the record as well.
Okay, was it in the packet?
I don't think it was.
Okay, well, it's great to have it now.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
No, I appreciate the question.
No, it was not.
Okay.
That was not in the packet, but equivalent over the 10 years, it's a little over 8.8 million in foregone taxes that we, that they would have paid if there weren't for this abatement. Again, this is a 10-year abatement with 100% of the, the taxes abated each year for personal property. We, we don't have a real good estimate on what the real property investment's going to be in. You know, they discussed having to ma, having to put some investment into the property. That is not part of this abatement, and so clearly that is going to be part of the normal taxation schedule. But I, I don't have a, I don't have a reasonable estimate for that. But it'll be not 150 million significant, but significant nonetheless.
Go ahead.
And just to follow up on that, so where, given that this is in a, in a TIF district, where, and, and the personal property is being captured by the TIF, if the abatement were not to be given, but the investment still continued, where would the, where would the tax revenue go?
It, it would be in the Curry Profile TIF allocation area, which would go into the Curry Profile TIF, which is essentially the two lots that were on the screen earlier tonight, the GE plant plus the, the parking lot next door. So that is the allocation area.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comment, either here or online? I'm seeing none. So could I have a roll call vote?
Actually, may I make one more comment?
Of course.
Sorry. I just, this is, I just wanted to take the opportunity to remind us all of how important our partnership with the BEDC is. I mean, unlike the city of Bloomington, who has a whole department dedicated to economic development, we don't have that. Jeff Cockrell does a great job, but we don't have an economic development department. The BEDC is essentially our economic development department. And it is our, you know, I think our, the county council has really valued our partnership with the BEDC. And I know that they have spent an incredible amount of money, or incredible amount of time and effort and knowledge and expertise in working with all the partners on this, with Enhanced and, and with the other, with Cook, with other partners to, to help bring this, this project here that we, I, I look forward to supporting. But I just, I just wanted to make sure we all kind of recognize the importance of, of our, of that partnership.
Right. And we used to have someone on staff that worked in the commissioner's office that did this years ago. When we talked about how many.
I remember when that position was eliminated.
It was a few decades ago. But I did want to mention, because somebody sent me a question, and I don't have the answer, and you don't have to answer it now, but they're just wondering how much water it's going to take, and will that change the water use in that area? So I just wanted them to know, ask the question.
Feel free.
I apologize, I didn't get it.
That's okay.
Yes, we use a fair amount of water. It takes about 250 gallons of water to process a wafer. And we intend to ramp to about 5,000 wafers per month. So I don't have the math off the top of my head, but it's, if you take 250 times 5,000, that's the monthly water consumption. We do about a 50% recycle. It actually takes about 500 gallons, but we do reprocess the water that we can.
So the 250 is new?
The net new water.
Okay. All right. Any other follow-up questions on, before we move on? All right, we are ready then for a roll call vote.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McCam?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. We are now at item nine on our agenda.
Counsel, I move to review and approve the contract between Monroe County and the Monroe County Sheriff Merit Deputies, and to simultaneously amend the 2024 salary ordinance to accommodate for any salary changes that are outlined in the contract.
Second.
Okay. So this has been an ongoing, ongoing topic, and it sounds like we might be coming closer to the end of the story. Would you like to tell us how it ends?
Sure. So this is the collective bargaining agreement that we have been working on with the sheriff's merit deputies. The agreement is for, the major changes to the agreement is, one, how the specialty pay is being paid. Previously, it was in lump sums. All those lump sums amounts have been switched to an hourly rate. Previously, the K-9 officer was not included in the contract agreement and only provided for by the salary ordinance. So we included that specialty in the contract. And then the other big change is how uniforms are being paid for, specifically for the first-year officer. And for the first-year officer, uniform supplies will be bought for them. And there is an exhibit attached in the contract which shows what the county is buying. And then thereafter, the deputies will receive the same amount they have previously for uniforms. So we're asking for your approval of this contract tonight, and then it will be presented to the commissioners tomorrow for finalization. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you. I'll start with questions to my right. Are there any questions or comments on the contract?
Yes, can you tell me what the total cost is? When you add all these changes, what the total cost will be for the county?
So I previously sent counsel a fiscal impact. And I looked at converting, what the impact of converting the lump sums to hourly rates would be. And I'm trying to open that document.
And just, just so, I'm sorry, I don't mean to, I'm just looking at the document right now.
Look right at it, you've got it pulled up.
Yeah, and this is, this is the column labeled difference in yearly salaries. Okay.
I believe so, it's not opening for me.
That comes up to 118,000, or at least that's when I added that column. And added in the FICA, I added in the FICA.
I saw what, what had been sent, but I thought, okay, what's the total of, when they're moving it around?
The major cost impact will be, so with the, with converting the specialty pay to hourly rates, that creates an hourly rate that's pretty individualized. And so it's hard to predict how that impacts the overtime rate because it, it's so individualized. I did do an overtime comparison that I sent to counsel, and I don't know why it's not opening. But in essence, it showed the individual officers who worked overtime, I think it was up until November 2nd, and what their pay was, and then if you looked at their new hourly rate. And so it's a little hard to predict how it impacts overtime, but it will impact overtime because everyone's hourly rate is changing.
Yeah. Go ahead.
So if I understood what we were looking at before, something it said, it was, because they couldn't do it with specialty pay or for something separate. And so we have other departments who, who do it differently. And are we going to be required to change all of that? Or is this just a part of the negotiation with this contract? Are we required to look throughout the county to make changes?
I think that both Mr. Cockrell and myself looked at it and felt that it was necessary under FLSA to change the lump sum rates to an hourly rate. We also looked to see if there was any other departments who get specialty pay. And I think there was the airport, which we accounted for in the salary ordinance. And was there any, I don't know that there was any other department.
I know, in the auditor's office, there's, there's someone who gets paid separate pay for doing a separate project. The reason, the only reason why I'm remembering that is because it was listed as auditor supplemental or something like that. And it made it look like the auditor was getting that money.
The TIF neutralization.
Right. So is that something we, we have to change? I mean, I, I'm just wondering if, the question is, if we have to change it for the highway department, from, I mean, will we have to change it for every department that gets specialty pay?
And I will double-check on the auditor. I think the specific individual that you're referring to is the TIF, they work with the TIF, TIF neutralization, and I think that's provided for by contract. But I can double-check on that. But other, I don't, I think we've accounted for all of the specialty pays that we are aware of and converted them appropriately.
Sounds messy.
Yeah, it does. Counsel Iverson?
I guess, am I directing questions to Ms. Molly Turner King? I guess. So we know that attracting deputies and retaining deputies is something that this council has been very concerned about. And it looks like the difference from lump sum to hourly definitely benefits some officers, and it decreases for other officers. Would you say, you know, overall, this contract is, is something that's going to help us attract and retain deputies?
I would hope so. I think when you look at the breakdown that I sent you, and I wish I could get my computer to open it. I think the, what also converted to a lump sum was not only specialty pay, but shift differentials. And I think that the shift differentials is what made it decrease for some. But other than that, it's relatively close to what they were making when it was a lump sum.
Okay, good, good. Yeah, I, I think my, my biggest concern is, is just that we're, we're doing things that we can to, to make sure that it's, it washes out so that we're attracting and retaining for folks. Thank you.
Are there other questions or comments on the contract? I'll just say thank you, Molly, for all your work on this. It's, like you said, it's been a long, long time coming and an inordinate amount of work, and I appreciate it. Yes.
I was just going to add in, maybe a year or so ago, I think, when we were having discussions with both our, our deputies and our, some of our jail staff, there were some discussion that was raised about whether or not the council appreciated those individuals. And I, and I want to say, as we look at a contract that comes out of a collective bargaining effort, that we very much appreciate our deputies, and we very much appreciate our, our friends working in the jail. And further than that, we appreciate the direction and the efforts that the sheriff and all those good folks have had in the last year or so. It's been a busy year since, since all this kind of has occurred and started. And I just appreciate the efforts to keep all that going, and including this, this right here, and Ms. Turner King working on it with those good folks.
All right. Is there any public comment on this item? I do not see any. So could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McCam?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. We're now at item 10, the.
Counsel, I move to approve the prosecutor's request for an additional appropriation in Fund 91590000, High-Tech Crime Unit Grant in the amount of $126,012 in the services category.
Second.
All right, thanks. And it looks like we have our prosecutor, Ms. Alafont, on Zoom.
Hi, good evening. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, welcome.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Hopefully, I'll be brief, but I'm here this evening because we have received a renewal of the grant to maintain the Monroe County High-Tech Crime Unit. As you may recall, two years ago, I successfully applied for and received a grant from the Indiana Prosecuting Attorneys Council to establish and maintain a high-tech crime unit in collaboration with Indiana University. The Monroe County High-Tech Crime Unit processes digital evidence to improve prosecution outcomes, both by strengthening meritorious cases and by exonerating the innocent. The unit received 158 investigation requests in 2023 for felony-level crimes ranging from homicide, child exploitation, arson, narcotics, and property crimes. The investigation requests stem from both law enforcement partners at the local, state, and federal level, as well as prosecuting attorneys from the following counties: Bartholomew, Brown, Green, Jackson, Lawrence, Marion, Monroe, Morgan, Orange, Owen, and Washington Counties. Within those requests, 307 items of evidence have been submitted for examination. These items range from mobile phones, computers, DVR surveillance systems, mass media storage devices, IoT devices, call detail records, and electronic service provider warrant returns. The unit has provided training opportunities for both law enforcement and prosecuting staff members, and assisted in developing search warrants, PNAS, provided courtroom testimony as needed. Along with providing support with forensic analysis, Monroe County High-Tech Crime Unit is also an affiliate with the Indiana Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force, and has aided in the investigation, search, and seizure of electronic devices used in the commission of crimes involving child sexual abuse. The grant is essentially the, the way the contract is worded, which we did get the contract signed by the Board of Commissioners last week. We get 1/10th of the money that the Indiana General Assembly gives to the Indiana Prosecuting Attorneys Council for the administration of this program. And currently, 1/10th is $285,000 a year. The one nice thing that Indiana Prosecuting Attorneys Council has been doing is engaging in negotiations at a group level because they established 10 different units across the state of Indiana so that we get better pricing on these very expensive forensic tools that we use, like Celebrite and Magnet and some of these, these other tools that are used. So what they do is they go ahead and pay for those tools out of the $285,000, and then we get what's left after that to appropriate. So that's what we're here to appropriate this evening, is the remaining $126,012 that we are receiving from this grant. And I'm happy to answer any questions. I went quickly.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments to my right? To my left? It does not appear that we have any questions for you. Thank you for the description and, you know, continued congratulations on this grant and the amazing work that it funds. It's important, and it's really cool that it's something that's, your office has capacity to handle.
Yeah, I have to say, this is, we've really received a lot of support from the university as well, and we couldn't have done it without their contribution of, they, they house it, so they give. they, they house it, so they give us the space, a lot of office equipment. And they have designated one of the IU Police Department's detectives that just serves in the unit and doesn't do any other IU functions. So they've really contributed a lot to the project. And I just want to recognize that, that strong partnership there.
Wow, yeah, that's great. So is there any public comment on this item? I see none, so could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too.
Counsel, I move to approve the court's request for an additional appropriation in Fund 40180000 Court Interpreters Grant in the amount of $10,000 in the services category.
Second.
Hello, Ms. Abraham.
Good evening. I'm here today, I'm Lisa Abraham, the court administrator. This year, they've decided to divide up my court interpreter grant in two installments. So for the first basically six months of the year, I received $10,000. Last year, I got $10,000 for the whole year. So I'm hoping after this, I'll get more for the second half of the year because I will definitely already go through the $10,000 very quickly. So this offsets all the costs that I don't have to pay now out of my special services line for the court interpreters that are required for us to provide for court hearings. It is a reimbursable grant, so I'm already holding on to some invoices. They gave this to me on November the first. So I already have some invoices that is going to take up probably close to $3,000 of this already, just from November 1st to today. So I'm here today asking for, to appropriate the $10,000.
All right, terrific. Are there any questions from counsel or comments? All right, any public comment on this item? I'm seeing none, so could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're on number 12.
Counsel, I'll be combining items 12A, B, C as one motion. I move to approve the sheriff's request for category transfers as follows in Fund 11700380 Public Safety Lit Jail in the amount of $19,580.87 from the personnel category to the services category. And in Fund 100380, general fund jail in the amount of $4,790.05 from the services category to the supplies category.
Second.
Good evening, counsel. I'm here to request a few category transfers. As you've noticed, the first of which is the amount of $19,580.87 from our public safety lit part-time hourly line to our public safety lit meals for prisoners line. We spoke with you during the budget sessions and explained that we are, of course, in need of additional funds for our inmate meals due to inflation, of course, and that amount has not increased in a number of years. So this is just, kind of piggybacks off that. There is, of course, a need for additional funds for food. The costs of items have certainly gone up, so that would be one of the items. The second would be for mattresses. We have recently been purchasing and updating some outdated mattresses. As you can imagine, those, you know, go through quite, quite a lot in the jail. And I'm, I'm regularly seeing damage to those take place, so there is a need. We also requested an additional $5,000 for the 2024 budget to account for this need. And then finally, there are two lines that account for one item that we're in need of. The total funds needed for the last item is $1,953.54. As I mentioned, a portion, a large portion of that, we intend to come from our contractual line. And the need is for inmate, inmate clothing. Our line is at a deficit at the moment. This would be for things such as the inmate uniforms, socks, underwear, whites, things of that sort. As you can imagine, we've gone through that quite a bit. So that's pretty much the extent of it, and I'll gladly answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from counsel? Counselor Munson?
Yes. I'm uncertain whether the, the motion actually stated all three requests. And I just asked, and they were combined, but I'm afraid that one of them was overlooked. And I'm not sure. Does any, did anybody else notice that, or is it just me? No, I added them, I thought they were right.
I thought all three made it in.
You thought all three made it in, okay. Then let's not.
The issue was B and C are from, are in the same fund, so B and C actually were sent together.
That's what it is.
Yeah, I noted that as well.
There's always a chance, though, that I will make a mistake.
No. I was just, I was just trying, I was just trying to catch you.
No, that's great.
No, I didn't, I didn't catch it until the agenda was already out and everything, that B and C were actually the same fund.
Okay.
You know, that kind of thing, or I would have combined them earlier.
Okay.
Counselor Hawke?
Right, I just wanted to say a great big thank you for looking within your budgets and not asking for additionals, but moving around the money where you can to make that budget work. And we're just going to have to work with all the departments to, to make sure they understand we're watching. Thank you. Once again, Michelle helped out with some numbers on another budget, not, not yours, but on another one, we're moving money around. And I think it's important that department heads and the people work with the dollars. Help us do that. Don't make us come after it. You help us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Whoop, any other comment? Any public comment on this item? I'm seeing none, so could we have a roll call vote, please?
Actually, you can do a voice vote.
Boy, let's do a voice vote. All in favor of supporting the motion to do category transfers in the jail, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Thank you so much.
Motion passes unanimously. And now we are at item 13.
Counsel, I move to approve the emergency management's request for an additional appropriation in Fund 4938000 Emergency Management Duke Energy Grant in the amount of $1,565.40 in the services category.
Second.
Do we have, oh, he's on there, yes, I see. Mr. Baker, welcome.
Yes, I am Justin Baker from Merns Management. And we are booking that, so the county council approved of a grant, a Duke Energy Grant last June in 2022. And that was for $5,000 and for the outdoor warning sirens. And so this, the thousand dollars will finish up that grant. So we just need the appropriation for that to purchase batteries to help keep the sirens going.
All right, we definitely want batteries. That's important. Any questions or comments from counsel? I'm seeing, seeing none, all right. No public comments? In that case, let's go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, thank you. Thank you. We're at item 14 with the Board of Commissioners, and I wanted to note that I will have a short recess after this item for bio-break purposes.
Counsel, I move to approve the commissioner's request for an additional appropriation in Fund 100161, general fund county buildings in the amount of $44,000 in the services category.
Second.
Okay, I'm going to make this one real easy.
All right.
Because I am that department that didn't look to see if I could transfer between categories or within any other accounts. So I don't need any additional in this particular motion.
None?
None.
None?
I'm telling you, I think this is a wonderful way we're working. I think it's great. Great. Withdraw the motion.
Madam President, I withdraw my motion.
So done. Let's move on to item 14B.
Counsel, I move to approve the commissioner's request for an additional appropriation in Fund 1000068, general fund commissioners in the amount of $20,000 in the services category.
Second.
Okay, so I, I would ask, because again, same situation. I didn't look to see if we could transfer within the lines. And so we believe that, that $20,000 could be reduced to three.
Three thousand?
Three thousand, please.
Ask unanimous consent to reduce the request from 20,000 to 3,000.
Uh, yeah, great, I guess. I, I never know how to handle that.
Seeing no objection?
There's no objection.
I'm so moved.
This is why I need a script. I don't know what to say to that. Um, okay, so now we're looking at $3,000 as an additional appropriation from general fund. And this is to make a video?
Yes. So, yes, that, so the, the reason for this request is that during the ARPA project list and everything that was coming together, the, the concept of having a video made that highlights not all of our ARPA projects, but some of the more major projects would be conducted so that we can kind of keep that as a memory of everything that the county has done with the funds that were provided to you guys. And so, and that particular contract is at $20,000.
All right, are there questions regarding this item? Counselor Hawke?
This is going to make me sound like an ingrate, but I really don't, uh, don't want to spend money on this. I think we have staff who could do what needs to be done. And we're real good at making do, and we need to get better at that. And we need to get it in training because if the city moves forward doing all the things they think they're going to do, we're going to have to get in training to make sure we're making use of every dollar. So I appreciate you working on the others, especially, and as a reminder, well, I've got the mic, I'm going to just say on that first one that, that she didn't need the 44,000 for because they looked around. It's not for the building department. It sort of looked like that when they were throwing, you know, but it is for the utilities or whatever, for county buildings, which is not the same thing as our county building department. Confusing, I know, but there was some conversation on sending emails back and forth. I thought we needed to clear that up, where you were getting it from, so. But I also want to say that our counsel office, when I suggested this, what, a few weeks ago, that we started doing this, and they just grabbed it and ran with it, and they were really making a difference. And that's what we need to do. And it's an important service, and I think we're doing what needs to be done.
Yeah, it's very well, much appreciated. I agree. Other questions or comments on this item? Counselor Crossley?
Hello. Um, in terms of the video, I'm curious about it. Is it, do you all have, like, a production company or somebody in mind? And what is, would, would be the timeline for the video to be done and to be released to the public?
I think that would depend on some of the projects, right? And yes, it's a professional production company that would be contracted with by the Board of Commissioners. So, and then as far as, they probably wouldn't really start it. And this is, what, the 12th, until the beginning of, of next year, so.
Counselor Deckard?
I, I appreciate your efforts to, to get that number down. That noted and said, I tend to be with, at least some of Counselor Hawke's comments on this. I, I'm concerned about the video, given that, number one, I'm not completely sure that we are done figuring out ARPA. And I cannot walk across this community without tripping over something else that either I noticed that ARPA could do or I'm approached about something that ARPA could do. And what worries me is that when the ARPA dollars are out, we're going to have other items that we've got to kind of focus on. And, and you all heard my mobility rant earlier today about rural transit. I just, I just, I can't get through any day without hearing more things that either we need to be doing, or no one else is doing, therefore, we're going to have to do it.
We might want to do it.
And, 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 and there's, I continuously hear people that say, well, government shouldn't do this and government should do that and, and stay out of this. But when it's your friend and neighbor, I mean, you can tell them philosophy all you want, but they still need to be fed and have a home and all that. So I'm, I'm a no on this one only because I think that there are probably some alternatively cheaper ways for the history center to know what we did during this time in a different way, that maybe isn't a video or maybe there's an in-house or something. So I, I am going to be a no on this one.
Uh, Counsel Munson?
I first thought it was strange to have this request come for this year's budget. We have lots of ARPA decisions yet to make. And to compile a history that is reflected in a video, it would need to be done toward the end of the ARPA project funding to really, to really show what the county has, has done with their once-in-a-lifetime source of funding for so many projects. And if this is a valuable thing to do, I think it should be reconsidered in a year or two years.
If I may, so this, this, the ARPA projects, first of all, the projects that you guys have approved, appropriated, and then some of the others that are in play, that's how I tend to term them, the stormwater issue out at the airport, for instance, because that's a, a large one. You have only just over $300,000 remaining if you do, in fact, follow through, you know, do those ones that are still kind of in play that I'm calling, that I referenced. So there's not a lot of additional projects that you can elect to do at this point in time. But that doesn't negate the fact that, you know, you guys can and we can have a, be kind of part of the contract is that, you know, we wait until all of the projects have been defined and then it's determined which ones are going to be highlighted. I'm just kind of throwing that out there in the sense that the timing for ARPA and the projects and, and this contract do not necessarily need to wait till the end, so we don't have to wait until all the projects are agreed upon before the contract is signed. The other thing would be that I know that the cost for this project is going to go up next year. And so it's just going to continue to go up, which was another reason to, to bring it to you now.
Are there other comments? I, I, I guess I'm going to be more blunt about my opinion. I don't feel comfortable having a video made. I feel if we, if we're spending ARPA money to do important good in our community, it should be noteworthy and newsworthy in and of itself. And I don't think we need to spend $20,000 to make a video about it. to spend $20,000 to make a video about it. And so I'm going to vote no. Um, I'll vote no if it comes back. And, um, yeah, I guess that's, that's really all I got to say about that. Um, any other comments before I move on?
All right. Uh, public comment on this item? I see none, so we will have a roll call vote, please.
Counsel Irvinson?
No.
Counsel Deckard?
No.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, no.
Thank you. Counsel Hawke?
No.
Counsel Crossley?
No.
Counsel McKim?
Yes.
Counsel Wiltz?
No.
Counsel Munson?
No.
Motion failed, one to six.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, I'd like to call for a 10-minute recess at this point. Um, so by my clock, we should be back at 7:37. And we are back. We're back. We're back.
Sorry. I'm done with my Christmas shopping. That's what I was celebrating.
Uh, we are returning from recess, re-recalling to order ourselves, and we're at item number 15.
Counsel?
Our, sorry.
Can you go?
I don't want to be on probation here. Counsel, I move to approve the probation department's request for additional appropriations in Fund 91469624, JDAI Performance Grant in the amount of $7,500 in the Supplies category, and $54,542 in the Services category, for a total appropriation of $62,042.
Second.
Welcome.
Yep, thanks.
There you go.
There it goes. Hey, okay, Troy Hatfield, Deputy Chief Probation Officer. Um, I'm here for three agenda items tonight. The first one is our involvement with the Juvenile Detention Alternatives, um, program. We've been involved with this since 2014 and received grants over the years to help support, uh, the services that we're providing here in Monroe County. Um, this grant is a, a performance bonus grant. So because we are doing as well as we are in implementing the different initiatives that we're, we're working toward, um, we were awarded, uh, $62,042, um, from the Indiana Department of Correction to help continue to support the services that we're providing. And mainly what this grant will go to, um, a, a great portion of it is to support, um, our nonprofit providers in the community, like the warehouse, um, who is providing a lot of services to kids and youth in the community. And this really goes towards a lot of prevention, um, efforts, uh, to keep, uh, youth out of the juvenile justice system overall.
I'm just impressed. You got a bonus. That's great. That's very cool. Um, questions? Comments?
Congratulations.
Exactly. Congratulations. Um, any public comment? Nope. And let's do a roll call vote, please.
Counsel Deckard?
Yes.
Counsel Wiltz?
Yes.
Counsel Irvinson?
Yes.
Counsel Crossley?
Yes.
Counsel McKim?
Yes.
Counsel Munson?
Yes.
Counsel Hawke has left the meeting. Motion passes six to zero.
Yes. That's how it works.
Yes.
Um, item B.
Counsel, I move to approve the probation department's request, request for additional appropriations in Fund 81609624, Justice Partner SIM Grant, in the amount of $60,000 in the Services category.
Second.
Okay, so the second request, uh, that we have is our Justice Partner SIM Grant, and, um, we've received this grant for about the past five years. It's $60,000 each year. Um, the program that we're going to continue to support is re-entry efforts, um, to try to support those who are coming back into the community after they've been released from our local jail. Um, some of those people have experienced, you know, a decent length of time in the jail, and we really want to provide some services for them as they come back into our community. This will, uh, we have a partnership with Centerstone, and, um, they are helping us, uh, by basically providing that warm handoff from the jail right into, into services. We have a person who's working in our office a couple of days a week, um, to meet with clients, um, so that we can get them in as quickly as possible, um, to try to get them tied into the services that they need.
Great. Are there questions or comments? Counsel Irvinson?
I don't have any, uh, questions. Just, you know, my, my counsel comments about what we're doing with the opioid entitlement dollars, and this item just show how collaborative we are moving towards the same goal. Uh, this is, this is great to hear. Congratulations.
I, I also want to add something I perennially say at these moments. Your department, other departments, but particularly your departments on my mind, does a tremendous job at attracting these dollars into the community. We would never be able to do this on our own. Uh, I mean, I don't think. I may be wrong on that. If we were to have to replace these, we would not be able to do it. And part of the reason that we get these dollars is because you and the leadership in that department are thought leaders on it. You're getting national awards, and you're, you're doing these things, and the state's looking to you, uh, federal's looking to you, and that's, that's an awesome responsibility. Uh, but also, these things are so crucial to the, the conversations that we're having. And I think back to a time that I was in your all's, um, waiting room, I think, waiting to maybe meet with you, and I'm looking through materials that are like there for participants and, and folks going through probation depart, programs. And I was impressed at the clarity, the sorting through things, figuring life out. I shoot, I wish I'd had that in my life a, a, at some point. It was just stellar materials. And I teach in some of these things myself, but not in that pro, and it's just awesome. So please keep at it. And taxpayers, please know that they're working hard to bring dollars here into this community, not other communities, but in ours, so that we can, uh, benefit from that here, and I appreciate it.
Appreciate that. I mean, we've got wonderful leadership in our department as, uh, with Linda Brady, our chief, and our presiding judge, uh, Judge DeKoff, and the other board of judges that really kind of help us with our vision and pointing us in the right direction to, to go after these funds and to be able to provide, to be able to provide these services to our, our community. And a little bit of a teaser or spoiler, next month I'll be coming to you. We've got, uh, about another $90,000 coming in in grant money for our problem-solving courts that we just found out that we were awarded. So, uh, that'll, we'll talk about that on next month when we come back.
Awesome.
Yep, this makes it more fun, that's for sure. Any other comments or questions? All right, um, any public comment on this item? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counsel Munson?
Yes.
Counsel Deckard?
Yes.
Counsel Wiltz?
Yes.
Counsel McKim?
Yes.
Counsel Irvinson?
Yes.
Counsel Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
And then we're at item C.
Counsel, I move to approve the probation department's request for a category transfer in Fund 11700226, Public Safety Lit Probation, in the amount of $2,500 from the Services category to the Personnel category.
Second.
Yeah, this is a simple category transfer. If you remember back when we were doing the 2023 budgets in September of 2022, around that time, um, the council approved an increase in probation officer salaries that was equal to what county employees received. Um, but none of our budgets reflected that when we were submitting them. So in all of my other budgets, I was able to do, uh, transfers within the Personnel category, uh, to cover those increases, with my only exception was this one. Uh, I didn't have any ability to, to do that, but, um, we have enough money in the 30s to move up, so if, if you were to approve that, I'd greatly appreciate it.
Well, thank you. I appreciate the maneuvering. Are there questions or comments? All right, public comment? Seeing none, we will do a voice vote on this one. All in favor of the category transfer, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously for the folks that are still here. Okay, sorry, moving on. Health Department.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request to de-appropriate in Fund 81509623, Tana Futures, Account Line 21112, LARQ, in the amount of $2,702.
Second.
Welcome, Ms. Kelly.
Uh, good evening. Um, so this is, um, pretty simple here. We just, uh, found an error, and we are just making this request in order to, uh, place this money into the correct fund.
Okay. Are there questions or comments on this item? Are there any public comments on this? Okay, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Counsel Crossley?
Yes.
Counsel McKim?
Yes.
Counsel Wiltz?
Yes.
Counsel Munson?
Yes.
Counsel Deckard?
Yes.
Counsel Irvinson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. Could we go to item B?
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request for an additional appropriation in Fund 81269624, Futures Clinic, in the amount of $2,863.15 in the Personnel category, and $2,169.06 in the Supplies category, for a total appropriation of $5,032.21.
Second.
And so this request is just one that, um, you've been seeing from us here frequently. So this is just requesting to appropriate the insurance reimbursement and then reimbursements that we have received, um, for submitting, uh, for the LARQs, which are the long-acting reversible contraceptives from the grant agency.
Great. Uh, questions or comments? I see none. Any public comment? All right, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counsel Irvinson?
Yes.
Counsel McKim?
Yes.
Counsel Munson?
Yes.
Counsel Wiltz?
Yes.
Counsel Crossley?
Yes.
Counsel Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Item C.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request for an additional appropriation in Fund 81809624, DIS Strengthening Prevention, in the amount of $18,000 in the Personnel category.
Second.
Uh, and this request is, um, originally, we, um, came to council and made a request based off of a grant award letter. Um, when we actually received the grant contract, uh, the amount was actually higher. Um, so I did submit a budget revision to the Indiana Department of Health, which has been approved, and so now I am making the request to council.
Well, happy, lucky surprise. Are there questions or comments? I don't see any, and any public comment? All right, seeing none, could we have a roll call vote on this one, please?
Counsel Irvinson?
Yes.
Counsel Wiltz?
Yes.
Counsel Crossley?
Yes.
Counsel Deckard?
Yes.
Counsel Munson?
Yes.
Counsel McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. And we have item D.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request for a category transfer in Fund 81809624, DIS Strengthening Prevention, in the amounts of $13,788.80 from the Supplies category, and $11,427.80 from the Services category, transferring $17,216.60 to the Personnel category, and $8,000 to the Services category, for a total transfer of $25,216.60.
Second.
Shoot.
And this is just a housekeeping item, so we have been spending, um, a lot of money on our mileage, um, training, travel costs. Um, in addition, this is just going to help give us additional funds for our part-time DIS.
Okay. Are there any comments or questions on this item? I see none. Are there any public comments? I see none of those. We can do a voice vote. So all in favor of the category transfers, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. And the motion passes unanimously. We are finished with the Health Department items. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is 17, from our clerk's office.
Counsel, uh, I move to approve the amended election supervisor job description and to simultaneously amend the 2023 and 2024 salary ordinances in Fund 12150062, Election Fund, Election Board, Account Line 12002, Election Supervisor, to accommodate D35 Hours Non-Exempt with an effective date of December 3rd.
Second.
And, um, I believe we have our clerk on Zoom with us.
Indeed you do. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Good evening. With apologies, I am at an election conference in Indianapolis. Um, so I apologize for any background noise you may hear.
All right, um, did you want to give us a little background on this item?
I, I do, um, with hopes, um, that we can discuss the, uh, WIS classification and the possibility of making it an SO position. This is not less than the third time I have attempted to, um, have this position reclassified. Uh, quite frankly, um, the pay, uh, is not commensurate with what is being asked to do, uh, of an election supervisor to do. Um, I have articulated that in every way that I know how, um, particularly being at this conference and just, um, everyone in here being cognizant of the, just the demands and the difficulties. Somehow that is not in keeping with what WIS uses to score what we do. Um, I actually invited the Secretary of State to be on this meeting because he's here, uh, he's been here today with us. Um, he had a conflict. I did receive a letter of support from him that I am hopeful that I can read into the minutes of the meeting, if you don't mind.
Sure, go right ahead.
Um, it is addressed to the Honorable Kate Wiltz and says, Dear Council President Wiltz and Council Members, on behalf of the Indiana Secretary of State's Office, I am writing to express support of appropriately funding full-time election administrative staff throughout the state. Election administrative staff have a vital role within a county clerk's office, acting as a subject matter expert, compliance, and training resource to provide the clerk of court with essential knowledge acquired through focus, study, networking, and experience gained from election cycle to election cycle. As Indiana's Chief Election Officer, I can tell you in today's environment, elections aren't limited to a day, a month, or even a year. The election cycle is a year-round and year-to-year undertaking. Voterless maintenance is a constant task that needs attention. State and federal guidelines are becoming stricter. Voter concerns about processes and security are greater than ever. Also, in election off-years, election system upgrades, district line maintenance, and training are required to ensure a smooth voting process. Appropriate funding of election administrative, administration staff enhances expertise and continuity of knowledge, and provides voters with reliable elections they expect and deserve. As you are aware, county clerks have multiple important and demanding responsibilities in addition to court administration. Election administration is critical. As Secretary of State, I respectfully urge your careful consideration of appropriate administrative and financial resources. In service, Diego Morales, Indiana Secretary of State.
Thank you. Um, can I go ahead and ask for questions or comments from counsel at this point? Yep. Well, Mr. McKim?
Thank you. Um, thank you very much, uh, Clerk Brown. Um, I am going to say that I, I, I think I tried to make this case at the, at the last meeting, that, you know, although we do have, we have the WIS process for a reason, and we need to respect their judgment, uh, and their analysis, it is certainly, it is not binding. Uh, we need to, we, we need to be able to feel free to substitute our own judgment when appropriate. And I just, I, I have to say, in this particular case, I don't think that their factor, their factoring of that position reflects the environment in which this work the environment in which this work needs to be done. It's, it's not, it's, it's not simply another Comet C or Comet D position. It's done in a, in a, an environment that is, is highly dynamic and stressful in which a mistake can literally result in national news, uh, of not a good kind. Um, it, it's in an environment in which election workers of all kinds, uh, have threats against them. I just think it's important that, that this position, uh, be compensated appropriately and that the cl- uh, the clerk is in the position to, uh, to maintain stability in this position. So I am, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not going to make the motion yet because I want to hear what everybody says, but I'm, I'm, I guess I'm trying to decide between making this an SO and tying it to a PAT C or a PAT D. Um, that, that's, I just, that's where my thinking is right now.
Could you tell me, um, what PAT C and PAT D salary range is?
Okay, so just, just to compare at the entry level, let's, let's just use the entry level as a comparison. So that position now is a Comet C. Entry level for 2024 would be 41,006. Comet D would be 43,008. A PAT B would be forty-seven, I'm sorry, PAT C would be, uh, 49,005. And a PAT D would be 55,007.
Okay.
And I'll note, we've also received, uh, some information on other, um, other counties and their handling of this position. It's really frustrating because it is hard to compare apples to apples because there really isn't anything that's construed exactly the same way.
This is mixed fruit.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Uh, Counselor Iverson and then Counselor Deckard.
Well, and, and to that point, there's the, the question I wanted to make is that we do have two sets of analyses. Uh, we have, uh, a set of analyses conducted by the council office and we have a set of analyses conducted by the clerk's office. Uh, and, and I was wondering, uh, if I could ask, you know, what, what did we learn from those two sets of analyses?
Just a moment.
And, and while you're pulling that up, I think the, the amounts that Councilmember McKim read out are important benchmarks, uh, from our own salary grid by which we need to keep in mind as some of these other analyses are, are read, are, are read out or displayed on the screen.
So we have a, um, a list of counties that we always, you know, reach out, uh, to get information for comparison. And a couple of the counties that, um, that the clerk included in her information, um, was Allen and Marion. So those are highlighted in red. We don't normally use that information, but every, but the others we do. So, uh, we were able to get, um, salary information and their levels, um, that kind of thing. So I'm trying to get it all on there. Um, they're, like you said, they're just kind of all over the place. Um, the job titles go from like head voter registration clerk there, uh, down to Vigo County. They don't even have an election director. Um, they have election administrators, you know, per, um, party. So, um, none of them, except for the one in Johnson County, that was close to 60,000, most of them, as you can see, range, um, between, what is it, like 33 to 60. So, I mean, like, all of them, all of them are comets, except for the one in Tippecanoe and it was an SO. And, um, and they had the clerk and so two co-directors. So, you know, we don't know what that information means, but that's what they gave us, so.
Yeah.
That's a lot.
Yeah, but they, and like I said, um, so
Sure.
just the one has an SO, but it looks like all of them are a Comet position. Um, but they do, it appears, you know, I can't remember what, um, at the starting, you know, we're kind of right there with, with the salary compared, with our other comparison counties. Maybe a little are on the lower end, so.
And, and just a quick follow-up. The, what's shown on the screen here incorporates both the work that county council office did and the work that the clerk's office did, right?
Yes.
So both offices did this work and, okay, great, thank you.
Go right ahead.
One of the, pardon me, I got the frog back. One of the things that, um, the secretary said in the letter that I appreciate, and I, I would kind of bring it into call here, is, um, the professionalism of election administration, it doesn't stop, goes on 365 days of a year. I will always say this, I am a little bit biased because I spent about four and a half to five years or so, uh, in election administration for the state, proving, once again, they'll hire anybody to do these jobs, but in that time, I got a real appreciation for, um, being anti what some people will say. They're like, well, you just worked twice a year and that is, nothing's further from the truth. Um, if you look at the election calendar that, uh, they're up there at that administrative conference looking at, there are literally deadlines, either around voter registration or finance or, you know, ringing the sheaves, whatever it is. There's something e- every so often and it's laid out literally around the year. One of the things the secretary said in the letter that I think is making this difficult is, and, and we're seeing this, is there's not a lot of counties who have ventured out to call this title election supervisor and identified somebody to do it. Even years ago with us, I think it was like a chief deputy function and we've only recently kind of headed that way. Now, it passed its prologue, and I believe it to be so, counties such as Marion, Allen, uh, who have gone the director route and kind of embraced that, that it's not just the clerk or the deputy every so often. I think that they're hitting what this really is, per that 365-day calendar. I think so for WIS, WIS is trying to compare, to find us another apple to compare to the apple, and they're going into a bucket that unfortunately doesn't sell apples. And that's, that's where we're getting, and I'm now officially out of metaphor support 2023. So I think
I've got a lot of apple ones.
I don't know where Counselor McKim and a motion is going, but I do think that it reflect, I, I think that a demanding community such as us, which leads in so many different ways, I mean, we just had probation in here talking about how they lead and the state watches them. I think that's a cart on this that we've got to catch up to. Um, and so I, I, I think it is, I got mad at WIS over this because I thought, well, why can't you figure this out? Well, looking at the list and just knowing anecdotally what I recall from my days up at the state, there's just not, they're not going to find a lot of election supervisors out there, um, or this kind of format. Even with that, you've got vote center versus not vote. It, it's, it's hard. So I, I, I'm interested in more from counselors, but I think it's hard to come up with the apple to apple that we always like to eat.
Um, comment from Munson, no? I'm, I'm curious about, because, you know, that, this real brief one-page, this that's being displayed, obviously is listing a majority of Comet as the classification. And I'm looking at the job titles and you're right, they're not election supervisor. They're clerk of some sort, voter registration. Well, voter registration is just a small part of supervising elections, so I want to be sensitive to that. I'm also curious then, you, I, I, something you said made me think, the chief deputy's role in this, in the fact that we currently don't have a chief deputy, is that complicating this issue for us?
I think years under the model, I think years ago that folks had where, I think the clerk had the chief deputy do most of these things. And that's anecdotally what I've heard. I don't know where that's written or anything, but I think that's how things used to be. If that model were still the same, I think it would complicate it. But I think we've done the election supervisor route now here at least, back at least four to five candidates that I recall anecdotally. Um, so I think there was a deviation away as things got, started to get a little bit more complicated on election administration. One thing, and I, I'll just make this remark, here's one thing that has changed literally in the last four years. Elections now have gone from that election day premise of, we're going to do most of this on election day and a little bit through voting by mail and absentee. We've now gone into, well, it might be vote centers, it might be satellite voting, it might be the old traditional system with the election season of early voting. And if I were to have the Secretary of State in front of me, I'd say, please don't eliminate that. I've heard rumors, don't do it. We need that, people are accustomed to it. Um, but, but that's not changing. People want that convenience of saying, I'm going to vote on Wednesday in the 30 days or 28 days or whatever it is now, before the election, and I don't want to be arrested for exercising my right to vote. And so the election supervisor, along with the clerk, the election board, they have to do Q-management for that season now and that need, referendum or you name it. Uh, hot candidate, not hot candidate. Who knows what turnout will be like in the next year? Uh, but they have to be able to adjust up and down.
Counselor McKim?
I guess I, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion. And this motion is because I, I really, I think we need to stand very strongly in favor of maintain, ma- making sure this position is filled as we head into a presidential election. Um, Counsel, I move we amend the motion on the floor to reclassify this position as an SO and tie its pay grid to the PAT D, 35-hour scale.
Second.
Who's second? Sorry. Thank you.
Any, um, comments on that motion? Go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I, I was wondering, uh, if I could hear from the clerk if they're still on the line uh, about, uh, thoughts on tying it to that particular salary grid.
I am still on the line, Counselor, um, and I have to say I'm disheartened as I am listening to the salary discussions. Um, the, the work that we did in the, when I presented in a, uh, correspondence at your last meeting, um, the, I am equating this to an election director position. I'm, I'm saying that that role has changed to that degree and we looked at counties that had universities and/or comparable, um, voters and those election directors made between 75,000 and 125,000. Um, and they had election, they had administrative assistants to, to help them while they do the election work. Um, my understanding is what was sent to you last week from the counties, you requested that the salaries were 60, um, to 93,000, I believe. Um, and to have someone in that role with a project management background is going to take something, to me, in the upper 60s, lower 70s, to even bring somebody to the table. That really is where we are now. Um, so as I listen to you say, in the 40s, um, I, I'm struggling because I fear that we're going to be in the same position. They will ask what the salary is and not be interested in going any further because they're not being paid for what they're being asked to do.
Thank you for, uh, for that, and I, I appreciate you staying on the line even as you're at a conference out of town. Uh, I, I, I think that's all I wanted to say at this point. I have more to say, but.
So let's, um, determine whether or not we're doing the amended motion. Can I do a voice vote on that?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor of amending the motion to reflect the SO category as described, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Um, so now we're considering an SO classification tied to, you said PAT D?
PAT D, correct.
Okay.
Um, which I, I just want to clarify, that is our highest level, that is our highest classification for professional staff. So that is not a, uh, a low classification.
And you were saying that it's the entry level. What's the whole range?
Oh. I, I couldn't hear you. Sorry.
Well, he had given the entry level. I was just asking for the whole range.
Oh, yeah, okay, so for PAT D, the entry level is, I wish I brought my ears, uh.
I've got it pulled up if you need it.
Yeah, you've got your reading glasses.
I've got my reading glasses. The entry level, uh, is 63,628 and it goes up to 80,600. What?
Are you
Wait, you're on 40-hour.
I'm, excuse me, excuse me.
You're on 40, yeah.
Thirty-five, excuse me. PAT D is 55,674 for the entry level, going up to 75,25.
Okay.
For the 25-year rate.
What was the Tippecanoe County, um?
Co-directors were 48.
Four.
Each.
Okay, so we, this would be one position, but we, we would well exceed that number.
Yeah.
How? Oh, you mean well exceed? Okay. Yeah. Okay, um, other comments, thoughts? Counselor Iverson?
So, in general, this is one of these really tricky situations. I think Counselor Deckard, uh, alluded to that it's really difficult for PAC to realize kind of how to deal with it. And I, I, one of the things I'm really interested in doing is, is looking at how we can, uh, work with our departments to identify these special cases as they're coming in so that instead of taking staff time to call every single county over again or send out emails and really investing a lot of staff time, that we can somehow standardize this to recognize that these are indeed special cases that don't fit within the, the general thing. So I, I did, I do want to point that out that we've seen a couple of these now and, and I think as, as we're evolving and changing as a county, we need to take stock of, uh, of when this is happening and how often it's happening.
Other comments?
I just want, uh, clarification, uh, when you want this to be effective. Um, if you make the original motion set effective, um, December 3rd, which means it would affect the last payroll of this year for 2023. Or do you want it to be effective for, uh, December 17th, which would be the first payroll of 2024? So I just want to make sure I know so we know how to, um, to fix the salary ordinances as well as, you know, affecting the person's payroll, final payroll.
Um, you know, it's funny, originally I was thinking, you know, January 1st, but I'm more inclined to now think, uh, immediately, uh, which would be the, what, December 3rd or whatever. But I, I could go either way.
Can we ask the clerk what her preference is on that?
Sure.
Hi, I apologize, a vendor just walked by and said hello. Please excuse me. Um, I, I'll be I, obviously after fighting for this on no fewer than three occasions, immediacy would be of importance to me. And I'm sure to the person within the position. I'm hopeful that adequately answers your question.
Yep, that does. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll leave it at December third?
That works for me.
All right. Other questions or comments or anything else? For the good of the order. I'm interested to see if there's any public comment on this item. Okay. Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Counsel Munson?
Yes.
Counsel Wiltz?
Yes.
Counsel Iverson?
Yes.
Counsel McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counsel Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, Clerk Brown, for being available this evening.
Thank you.
We are at number, I don't know where we're at.
Eighteen. Counsel, I move to approve the sheriff's request for an additional appropriation in Fund eight-one-zero-three-zero-zero-zero Operation Pullover in the amount of three thousand, three hundred and forty dollars and eighty-four cents in the personnel category.
Second.
And we have Ms. Gregory from our auditor's office to talk to us about this lovely item.
Yes, thank you. Okay, you might remember, we actually spoke about this grant earlier this year. So you may recall from that conversation that we've changed the procedure with how this, how we move forward with this grant just to kind of better our process. So in the past, it was like estimated the appropriation or we would appropriate based on an estimate of the funding we would receive from the city. However, that caused some trouble. So we revisited that process. And now upon receipt of a refund for when we present the claims, we are now appropriating cash in the fund. So we will correct the, the expense from the general fund and move it into the grant fund now that there's cash available if you approve the appropriation. Any questions or clarifications?
Are there questions from counsel? Well, I appreciate that the process has been amended to be a little bit more accurate. I'm wondering if either you or Ms. Turner King could provide information on the status of maybe an agreement to make this grant a little bit more predictable or clear?
I'm going to be reaching out to Sergeant Cole, who works for BPD and he's the one who manages the grant for BPD. The way the grant works is the city obtains, applies for the grant, they obtain the grant, they put up the match and then they prepare the budget. And then through reasons that are not exactly clear in the granting document itself, the grant money is shared between Elletsville IU, the sheriff's department and BPD. So then the sheriff's department submits their claims to Sergeant Cole, who then submits their claims to the granting agency. So I'm going to meet with him, try to figure out all those intricate details and see if we can come up with some guiding principles.
Okay. Appreciate that. That will be lovely. So for the matter at hand, and if there's no questions from counsel, is there any public comment? I see none. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counsel Wiltz?
Yes.
Counsel Iverson?
Yes.
Counsel Deckard?
Yes.
Counsel Munson?
Yes.
Counsel Crossley?
Yes.
Counsel McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Now we are at the approval of summary minutes.
Counsel, I move to approve the summary minutes of September seventh, twenty twenty-three, budget session number two. September thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, budget session four, November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Regular session and November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, joint executive session of council and board of commissioners as presented.
Second.
Anybody have any changes? All right. Could I have, can we just say a voice vote on this one? All right. So all in favor of approving all of these lovely minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Now we are at item twenty, which is counsel comments, and I have a note to discuss JFAK. Ms. Crossley.
I'll keep it brief since it's been a long night. And, and thinking about, since this is what our last meeting of the year. Wow, it's been a year. We've had a lot that we have discussed and, and all things related to committees, related to anything related to criminal justice reform. And our counsel made it, deemed it possible once we were kind of suspended from the other committee to come up with JFAK. And we had a lot of time, effort and energy from us that served, from this counsel, myself, Counselor Iverson, and you, Madam President, plus we've had staff that has spent countless hours. Plus we had members of the public and some people from the public be a part of the committee as well. And one of the things that we did is discuss that we wanted to bring our recommendations to the council to present it at hand, which technically we did, but we never circled back to looking at those and talking to, about those in depth. And as I listened to Counsel Iverson go with the new committee of the opioid settlement money, it got me to thinking that we really would be doing a disservice. And all the work that we've done that our community has trusted would be in vain if we let this kind of stuff go off into the sunset as we ride off into the new year. Sorry, I'm picking up some of your puns. So that being said, I guess I just wanted to check in with my colleagues to see if it is deemed necessary, since we are still missing that piece, where we could bring this back and set a time limit on ourselves to make sure that we are, you know, doing our due diligence and staying in the lane of fiscal body. And ensuring that we can bring this up again for us to reconsider at hand. And maybe some of those recommendations could also be passed to the opioid settlement group as well. I dare say we still have a little bit of ARPA funds. There's funds that are all available all around for us to use in our, our leisure. But if it is the will of the council, is that something that we want to continue, but also set a time limit on, on that work?
Yes. All right.
Thank Councilmember Crossley for bringing this up. I do want to say, I have been talking with council staff to put this on the agenda and it just didn't happen. So we do want to talk, but I think Counselmember Crossley's comments bring up a really interesting topic on the contract or, or the legislation that created JFAK. And I don't know if our council has that pulled up. But my question is, can we still bring updates to the council body from JFAK without JFAK being a body? Because JFAK will sunset. It will no longer exist after this meeting, essentially. But can we, can we still bring the updates to enforce from, you know, the reports, or do we need to keep the body alive?
Right. That's a really good point because our, it was our directive to do, was it quarterly?
Quarterly.
Updates. And if we don't exist, that's rough. Counsel Munson?
A couple of comments here. First, I would very much appreciate hearing a report and discussion, a discussion in your report. Second, I would like to see a written document for the record. I think that's very important. And this is certainly something that will can have a life after you complete it. Third point, I think the strategy for continuing the viability of JFAK might be to amend the the resolution or whatever that create, it's organic act, whichever that is, and change that date and give yourself a, a, a new later set for setting. Thank you.
Thank you. I am wondering if Ms. Turner King has a thought on this.
So I'm looking at the resolution that Resolution twenty-two-three-oh-nine, which established the Justice Financial Advisory Committee. And I reviewed the duties listed in that resolution. And it doesn't provide for quarterly updates. So my suggestion would be that we update the resolution to provide for the quarterly updates. Because the last sentence is JFAK reserves the right to discuss additional objectives if deemed appropriate, which you have done. So I would suggest updating the resolution and then providing for the extension of time to allow for those updates.
Can you do that without us doing something right this minute? Like, is that something that if we go past the end of the year and it sunsets, can we, can you still make that happen since we're not meeting between now and the end of the year?
So in the resolution, it provides that JFAK will complete these duties no later than December of twenty-twenty-three. And if members of JFAK deem it necessary for an extension of time to complete these duties, the council will have to approve such. So I think that you can amend, and I know you talked about it at a public meeting, adding the quarterly reports. So if members of JFAK are deeming it appropriate, I think the council could go ahead and approve the extension of time.
Okay. So counsel, I move that we extend the existence of JFAK through the end of twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
Second.
Or third.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, there we go. Excellent suggestion, Counsel Crossley. Appreciate it. I do think also then somehow we need to get together and organize what we're doing.
And there, there is stuff to talk about. There's a, there's a lot to discuss.
Yep. Okay. Other counsel comments? Counsel Iverson?
Sorry, is that too much?
There's a lot of energy down there.
All right. I'm wearing a mask today because I was exposed to COVID. COVID is still out there. Please go get your shots. Please take care of yourself and find all information at cdc.gov.
It was important.
I'm wearing a nice mask.
Counsel Deckard?
One thing, I, I just wanted to say, I appreciate what Counselor Crossley did in bringing this up and having us talk about it. Because a thought occurred to me literally while I was waiting with my girls to see Santa on Sunday, which is a joyous and happy occasion. And the funny thing is, while you're doing that at Fountain Square Mall, you're literally standing next to the old jail before this jail. And I was explaining to my girls that, you know, this was the jail. And if you read the stories about it, there was a lot of problems with that jail. And then they got the new jail and they thought that they might have solved a lot of the problems with that jail. And as it turns out, as we know now, contemporary, that, well, they didn't. The thing that I, that strikes me is we have a lot of good minds thinking about this and particularly that JFAK committee. Perfection is not likely to ever arrive. There's going to be, there's going to be mistakes in, that we see in thirty to forty years. Hopefully there will be very minimal mistakes, but there will be mistakes. My hope for us is we move forward on what JFAK has looked at and what everyone's bringing. And we got the new transition director coming in, which is, I thought that was nice this evening, is that we're continuing to move at a deliberate speed towards good resolution that serves the people really well. And that JFAK report, I still say this, I said the day it came out, was the most comprehensive report I ever saw from a citizen body that had been ever put, put together without law staff help. And I think that there's some gold there, a lot of gold, and I hope that we can use that and keep that spirit alive.
Thank you. Counsel comment from this end of the table? Nothing, nothing. All right.
Yes, wishing everybody happy holidays and a wonderful start for the new year. We've got a lot of work ahead of us.
Absolutely. I'm not going to belabor that.
This is our last.
This is our, this is our last meeting for twenty-twenty-three, so.
Well, okay. So then I will just take a minute just to thank.
Here he goes.
President Wiltz and Counsel President Proten Deckard for all of their really hard work in, in keeping us cats well herded. And, and of course, the council office, Kim and Courtney and, and Molly and Breann from the auditor's office, who is always here at our meetings. So everybody's just, you know, we could not do any of this. You guys do so much for the community. We really appreciate your help. Professional work.
Thank you. Well said. I will just echo my thanks to the staff and to my colleagues for making this a job I look forward to, believe it or not. I think it's, it's amazing what we can get done and how we can do it in a way that's collaborative, cooperative, and sometimes downright pleasant. So with that, everybody have a wonderful holiday season and we will see everyone in the new year. We are adjourned. Thank you.